So, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. I want to say good morning to everyone. It's March 25th, and this is County Council meeting. I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, Council. We have all members of Gray County Council in attendance today.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everyone. Right smiling faces. Shut those teeth. All right. Number three is the land acknowledgement. So, we acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Anishinaabe, the Six Nations of Grand River, the Howden Ashani, and the Wendat, Wain dot, Wain dot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Métis and Inuit, Inuit, excuse me, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. We'll turn next to item number four. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest from anyone or a declaration of interest? I do not see any. I would ask if one does arise during the course of the meeting that you would declare it at that time. Okay, we're on to item number five. Five A is the County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated March 11. It is moved by Deputy Warden McQueen and seconded by Counselor Keveney. Is there any discussion on those minutes? I do not see any hands, and if that is the case, then I will-
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see Counselor McQueen's hand.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Warden McQueen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just want to raise the point with regards to the committee of the whole with Anthony Fleming and the Property Assessment Corp. It can be verified, but I thought the budget yesterday has froze that market value assessment for another year. I don't know if Kevin's on the line, but I thought I heard that this morning that they froze it for another year. I just wanted, if Kevin had verification of that.
That was my understanding, but I'll let Kevin weigh in.
That was my understanding as well. The municipal finance officers put out that it says further postponing the property tax reassessment and and the government we seeking input from municipalities taxpayers and interested stakeholders regarding the timing and the valuation for the next reassessment, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to raise that just to make sure everybody was aware of that, so.
Okay. Any other questions or issues to raise with the minutes? Seeing none, I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed? I will say that that's carried. No one showing opposition. Item five B is the Long Term Care Committee of Management Minutes dated March 9. It is moved by Deputy Warden McQueen and seconded by Counselor Columbus. Any discussion or items to raise on those? Seeing none, then I will call the question. Anyone opposed to approval of those minutes? And I see none, so I'm going to say that that is carried. Thank you very much. Item five C, Long Term Care Committee of Management Close Meeting Minutes, which are dated March the 9. Anyone need to raise anything there? We would have to go into closed session if you did. And seeing none, I will then call the question. Is there anyone opposed to approval of those minutes? That too is carried. No one showing their hand in opposition.
Mr. Warden, I will just note that the mover for that was Counselor Columbus and the second was Counselor Woodbury.
Oh, yes. Okay. So, did I miss one then? Did I miss item five B?
No, you just missed stating who the mover and second were for the close meeting minute.
Yes, I'm sorry. My apologies. Yes, moved by Counselor Columbus, seconded by Counselor Woodbury. You try to keep me organized, and I do a very good job of messing it up every single time, so. My apologies. Okay. We have no close meeting matters. And we're now on to item seven A, the Board of Health Minutes dated January 22. I know that Dr. Era is here, but it's moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Dr. Era, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, Council. The highlights from the last two meetings are on two fronts, the COVID-19 and the opiate. For the COVID at the time, and we remain in full control of the pandemic, the issues of concerns from those minutes were the non-essential travel between our health unit and health, neighboring health units that could have higher risk, and that was mitigated mainly through communication and and utilizing the optimal response that the public and businesses have shown throughout the pandemic, upping the communication to encourage the businesses to potentially turn away customers if they see fit and having all the freedom there. We did not really receive any situation or complaints about situation that require enforcement. And we know that the numbers have been between the time of the minutes and this time, they were going down, then they were going up provincially. Nevertheless, in Gray Bruce, we remain in the green, and my projection of the coming two weeks would be to remain in the green based on the data we have. And so that is the concern that was at the time, non-essential travel between health units, and it has been mitigated nicely so far. Vaccine rollout, the processing, the process proceed according to the provincial plan. There was a time where our shipments were minimal. Now we see that there is increase in that shipment. It's really not enough to challenge our capacity in any way. Nevertheless, we're wrapping up phase one this week and next week. And we have proceeded with phase two with the 70 plus. There has been, at the time of the minutes, piloting the provincial system. And right now, the booking system is in use. There has, there have been issues or glitches in the system, and our provincial colleagues, I know, doing their best to ensure those are addressed. So that's on the opiate front. The, sorry, on the COVID front, on opiate, we continue to maintain the core program functions such as needle exchange program, naloxone distribution program, and the opiate working group. And of importance and to highlight in the last board meeting, there was a call for resolutions from the Association of Local Public Health Agencies Annual General Meeting, which is the most important meeting for public health in the province. And our board decision passed a motion to direct the staff to prepare our resolution for Alpha Annual Meeting to call on the need for public health to capitalize on the COVID-19 emergency response and mobilize the community after the emergency to address the opiate crisis. So those are the main highlights from the minutes of the past two meetings. Open to questions as always.
Thank you very much, Dr. Era. Counselor Patterson, is there anything that you wanted to add?
I do, Mr. Warden, but I see Counselor Millen has his hand up.
Yeah, I see his hand, but I'll let you go first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. With the minutes, I want to report that Anne Edie, Mayor of King Carden, was elected vice chair. So we now have a full executive, myself as chair, Anne Edie as vice chair, and Helen Claire Tangling, who is our provincial appointee. I also want to speak about the recently published Sunshine List as it has raised some questions. It is important to note that this is a listing of public sector employees who earned $100,000 or higher, and that this list does not reflect any comparators. It is just a list. I can share that Dr. Era is paid a salary and paid for his overtime. And he has literally worked every day since the first COVID-19 cases in Gray and Bruce were identified in March 2020. His salary is set by the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care. And at this time, I think it's appropriate, as we are just a year and a bit into this pandemic, to recognize Dr. Era for his leadership, his guidance, and his excellent communication strategies that have steered us in the right direction to beat this pandemic. I also want to thank his team and his staff for their work, but we all know someone has to lead that team. And I do want to acknowledge that Gray Bruce has lost two individuals to COVID-19. I feel for these families, and I think of them often with their loss, but it is a stark reminder of how serious this virus is. Thank you, and back to you, Mr. Warden.
Counselor Patterson, I will turn next to Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just, I want to echo what Counselor Patterson has said because I fully endorse and value Dr. Era's continuing work over the past year or so. My question actually was, I note this week, Gray County, or Gray Bruce, rather, received approximately 5,850 vaccines, and I'm just wondering, Dr. Era, what is our capacity to dispense vaccines? Like, how many could we handle if we came into an unlimited supply? How many could we vaccinate each week? Please.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair, the three hubs have the ability, the capacity to vaccinate 10,000 per day. If we look at the week, we can utilize different channels of vaccine distribution. The hubs is one of them. The community clinics, we have mapped out the need in the community. Pharmacists are also a capacity. They're not available at this point. Nevertheless, as soon as the provincial direction allow them to go forward, we have at least nine pharmacies in Gray Bruce. Each one of them can provide vaccine with the, with the capacity of 400 per day. And we have, as you know, many mass immunization hubs across the province. For the, the capacity can be distributed depending on the human resources we have, and we have a list of volunteers and a list of vaccinators. We can, we can up our capacity effortlessly to, to 25,000 per week right now. We know we can up it more if there need be, based on the hub operation alone. Nevertheless, we don't anticipate these shipments to be here before mid, mid, sorry, mid-April or after.
Okay, thank you very much, and I just want to add that I appreciate Dr. Era and the Warden and our MPP, their advocacy to make sure that Gray Bruce is in fact getting our fair share of vaccines because the demand in some of the hotspots in the province, I'm sure, is maybe trying to influence that they should get more. And I just, I want to make sure, and I know we're getting our fair share, and I just want to acknowledge the good work of a number of people and Sue as well, as Chair of the Health Unit, to make sure that Gray Bruce is getting, in fact, our fair share. So, thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Mill. Next, we have Counselor Silver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I too want to thank Dr. Era for the excellent work he's doing. And I know he does put in a lot of overtime, and the results are here for all to see that we've had, you know, very minimal casualties in Gray Bruce. And certainly where there have been outbreaks in our long-term care homes, they've been quickly contained and, and they haven't spread throughout the home with massive deaths. So I think, you know, the hard work of Dr. Era, you know, is partly responsible for that, and so I really appreciate his work. The, the thing with the vaccination is I keep hearing frustrations with the provincial system and the lack of coordination with the local clinics. I've heard, like, we've had clinics here in Thornbury, and I want to thank the Health Unit for organizing those with local doctors, but then other people haven't heard of them. But when they book through the provincial system, people have been sent to Penetang machine. And just yesterday, I heard about two people from Wyerton who were booked in Collingwood. So they would have to drive by the Bay Shore hub to get to Collingwood. So I'm just wondering, when people do register on the provincial system, I know that's how they're supposed to do that, how is it that they get directed to, you know, their local clinics rather than being sent to Simcoe County?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there have been a number of glitches in this system, and that's not unexpected. And the, it is not under our control as a health unit whatsoever. We upload our clinics, we identify the dates and the number, total number in the system, and we do that five days beforehand, so the previous week. And some of the issues that surfaced is certain towns in Gray Bruce are identified in the system as belonging to another health unit. There was a case, at least one of clinic that is booked that shows to the public as full. However, nobody was registered in it. And you can appreciate, and I'm not an expert in IT, but in the background of the system, it could be a simple setting that can be changed, and they have been changed. Other, other type of glitch is when, when people are calling to the helpline, they're being directed to a different health unit. And those are simple things to fix, and they have been fixed as we go. What else can surface in this system, we don't know. Nevertheless, I know our provincial colleagues have been actually working around the hour to make this as smooth as possible and to ensure going forward, we're not going to be running into these things. One of the other glitches, and it's worth mentioning here, that when people log in, they don't see any clinic for Gray Bruce until July or something to that effect. And I want to reassure the public, no, we have 10 clinics this week, and we will have more as we go every single week. So there is no need to panic and call different, different agencies, whether it's the health unit or the family health teams. And to that point, going into phase two, we do have a plan to deploy our own booking system, and we still would be utilizing the provincial system for the age group. And that hybrid system or combination of systems, I believe, will serve our residents. I would urge everybody to be patient. The, the system is there. It's not perfect. Nevertheless, we depend on our provincial colleagues to provide that service.
Thank you. Just to follow up, I'm just wondering, we have 5,900 seniors over 80 in Gray Bruce. Do you have any idea of how many of those have been vaccinated right now?
So last week, we vaccinated all of them except 850 this week. These 850 are offered clinics. So if people wanted the vaccine, they will be able to get it by the end of this week from the age group 80 plus. If somebody was missed for whatever reason it is, we will have those clinics available as well going forward for them.
So how would these people register? They go to the province and tell them that?
So through you, Mr. Chair, we have two clinics for the 80 plus this week. And the public can go on the provincial website or call the helpline, the provincial helpline, and they will, they can register themselves into these clinics.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Silver. I do not see any other hands, Madam Clerk. Have I missed anyone?
No, sir.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Era.
Mr. Warden, if I may add one final point, just based on the last question. So everybody in phase one will be offered the vaccine this week. Some groups have not provided their lists for whatever reason it is, whether they don't want the vaccine or not at this point or communication. Nevertheless, those groups will have the opportunity next week and the week after, and as we go. And it's worth mentioning that the long-term care sector will be offered the second dose immediately within the 28 days for residents, for staff and caregivers. And if there's any heat going to be taken, I will be taking that heat to ensure that that second dose is provided for that sector.
Sorry, we have a noisy fire engine in the background. Counselor Robinson, see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning to you and members of County Council. I too want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Dr. Era and his team, and certainly the public unit health board. I think it's essential in terms of the work that you are doing. My question to Dr. Era is, individuals that originally have declined the vaccine, if there is a change of mind, what would the process be for an individual to then have a vaccine? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if it is through the age group, so a person who is 80 plus who did not, was not comfortable taking the vaccine, and down the road, they decided to change their mind, they can register in any clinic with 70 plus or 60 plus. So that is included there. With our partners, whether healthcare workers or firefighters, police, they qualified in phase one, and they will remain qualified. They can connect with, with their organization, and their organization has that channel directly with the health unit to ensure these lists are updated. One example that repeats is long-term care sector has visitors or essential caregivers, and those essential caregivers will change. Somebody else might volunteer from the family or become the caregiver. So that, that door will always be open, and it will be through the organization that is running that part of the sector.
Thank you, and I'm most pleased to hear that. Appreciate it. You are on mute, Mr. Warden. Sorry, I turned it off at the fire engine. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Counselor Robinson, and next is Counselor Columbus.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. Thank you to you, Dr. Era, for your determined effort. Not a day off since in over a year. I'm sure that you and your family must be exhausted over all of this effort, but it is so greatly appreciated and valued, and we really want to thank you for that. I just wanted to mention how pleased we were to have the mini clinic in Meaford last week. My husband has gone to the clinic in Thornbury this week as well. And the curious thing that I wondered about was I had booked through or have heard of the booking through the provincial system will give you a date for your second dose four months from now. And yet, the other clinics, the physicians involved will be calling their patients and determining when their second dose will be held. Can you clarify what is going to happen with that, with the second dose? Will it be four months from now, or is it, again, still up in the air?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you for your remarks. Thank you all for your remarks. I'm glad to be of service. The second dose is determined according to provincial direction to be after four months. So anybody who's vaccinated, whether through the clinics or the family physician, who's usually, we, we, not usually, every registration for every dose in Gray Bruce will happen through public health, through the same systems called COVAX, the electronic medical record, and the system will automatically book people four months after. So whether the vaccine is happening in the hub, in a mini clinic provided by public health nurse or a local physician, supported by public health, it is going to be four months from now. If there is more amounts of vaccine, we might see that that four-month window is shortened. Nevertheless, at this point, the, the direction is four months, and the only exemptions are for the long-term care residents from the province and First Nations adults. Nevertheless, I added that second exemption for caregivers and staff in long-term care in Gray Bruce. So the entire long-term care sector will be, will be covered with a vaccine, and hopefully that, that's gonna, not hopefully, for sure, that will mitigate that risk.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Counselor Columbus? Next is Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll echo, I'll echo the gratitude everyone has expressed to Dr. Era. It's been, we've been one of the best performing health units in Ontario, and this is not me saying it or me giving platitude. It's the numbers and statistics that suggest this. My question, Mr. Warden, is with regards to the vaccines themselves. There's been reports that, that AstraZeneca causes blood clot. There's been reports following that, that there's no increase in the instances of blood clots, and the number of blood clots that are happening are practically the average that would have happened with or without the vaccine. Nonetheless, that does create a sense of fear among people who maybe watch one, one of those news reports and not the other. My question is, are people allowed to opt out of having a particular brand of vaccine? Or do they have to take the brand that is available when their appointment is made? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Era.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the, the AstraZeneca vaccine has not been available in Gray Bruce yet. It's only Moderna and Pfizer. There are certain reports from efficacy of the vaccine, and I should provide definitions. Efficacy is the term used for data coming from the clinical trial. Effectiveness is the definition of the data coming from the real-life application. So the efficacy for AstraZeneca to start with was less than Pfizer and Moderna was around 75% efficacy. When the effectiveness data came out, it is equivalent to, to the other two vaccines, and the effectiveness data is superior to the efficacy just in sheer numbers of sample size. Recent reports mentioned that the AstraZeneca is causing certain complication, blood clots. Nevertheless, NACI, National Advisory Committee for Immunization in Canada, did not change its recommendation. It's, to start with, they recommended for a certain age group, then after the effectiveness data, recommended for everybody. There are no recommendation from NACI at this point to, to consider AstraZeneca as increased risk for any complication different from the other two vaccines. It's important to outline that before answering the question. I do believe we need to provide that information. The, the decision of a person receiving a vaccine or not is their personal decision. So if they decide at the last minute that, you know, I'm not going to receive this vaccine because of its brand, they will be able to opt out, no question. Can we accommodate to provide people with the vaccine they, they wish? Not at this point. At this point, we are providing the vaccine to everybody, or our goal is to have no dose in the fridge for, for the shortest period of time as fast as we can. Can they book based on vaccine? Again, not the brand. It's not at this point. Now we open the clinics, and whatever vaccine is available will be available, and it is my recommendation. And it is my recommendation that people receive any vaccine. It is the most effective one, the one that's provided to them at the time.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Counselors?
No, no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands. And if that is the case, then I will thank Dr. Era. There's time, good discussion, and I will call the question on the on approving or receiving, excuse me, the Board of Health minutes dated January twenty second. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much, Dr. Era. Okay, we're on to item eight, and item eight, we have two two sets of bylaws. They are being moved by Counselor Hutchinson and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Is there any discussion on either of those two bylaws before you? Seeing no questions, I will call the question then. Is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, I will say that that is carried. Okay, item number nine, good news and celebrations. Anyone have any good news and celebrations they want to share with us? I see Counselor Desai. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, yesterday was was the hundred and thirty first anniversary of Agnes McPhail, a a local Gray County hero and as well a national hero. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to to point out that she was a pioneer for not just for women's rights, but for human rights in general. And I recognize as well that we still have some ways to go in terms of gender parity in not just our political world, but in in our world in general. But it's also important at the same time to acknowledge the victories that we have achieved as we aspire to higher peaks. And so I just wanted to bring that up as as part of the needs and celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Desai. Anyone else? Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I would just say, yeah, amen, Akash. Good for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mill. Is there anyone else with good news and celebration? I see no other hands. Maybe I can pipe in. I would just like to acknowledge that just yesterday, the Gray and Bruce Federations of Agriculture had their annual Politicians' Day. It was well attended and very well done. With everyone's leave, I just want to give a quick, quick summary, if I might. Topics discussed included seasonal and temporary foreign workers issue. We learned that about twenty two thousand people each year come to Ontario from foreign lands to help out in agriculture. And they go through each farm that hosts these workers, go through about five audits per year. The workers are quarantined upon arrival, and my understanding is that they have to have a test, a negative test before boarding the plane to come to Canada. They are tested again on arrival and then ten days later, and they are, of course, quarantined for the required period. Most are from hearing from Mexico, Jamaica, and Trinidad and Tobago. And the farmers are actually organizing and renting planes to bring these workers in. They're very much needed. And they work on average for about twenty four weeks, and they can stay in Canada for up to eight months. We heard from heard from the pork producers, and the pork producers, like all of the other producers, seem to be highlighting a theme, which is we need more broadband, and it was good news on the broadband front, by the way, yesterday in the provincial budget, I understand, just just over two more billion dollars will be allocated to expanding broadband in Ontario. And that would bring the total investment by the province to four billion dollars. That's B. Besides that, in that word, but the pork producers also highlighted Bill one fifty six and and talked about the fact that it's been very helpful in keeping farms safe and protecting food safety. And they highlighted that they contribute about one billion to the Ontario GDP each year. The dairy producers, that was Mark Hamill. He talked about the fact that in November twenty twenty, they had established a an animal advisory table. The butter issue came up, but whether butter is harder now, apparently it's being investigated. I remember from law school, the butter cases, very famous cases. They are looking for government incentives to expand dairy and meat processing, and they're calling for a grocery code of conduct to support food, the food supply chain. And lastly, they're calling for a better border enforcement to validate import products from the sheep producers. Again, they raised the issue of broadband and processing capacity. The beef farmers talked about processing issues. They're calling for an Ontario Meat Processing Growth Fund. And they're calling for an agri-food workers to be given a high priority in receiving vaccines. The Saugin Valley Conservation Authority did a presentation, and essentially they told us that they are going through a strategic planning exercise and rebranding over the next six months. Alice is a group that supports wetlands and other wildlife and habitat in conjunction and working with farmers. They mentioned that they had about eighty nine projects on the go and about seven hundred and twenty acres involved in those projects. The Ontario Federation of Agriculture did a presentation on greenhouse gas pricing. And the overall message there is that they feel that the federal carbon tax regime is an ineffective instrument to drive down agro emissions. So I'm sorry I took so long, but it was a very, very good and informative meeting, and I just thought would bring those highlights to council. Is there anything else under good news and celebrations, Counselor Desai?
Thank you. Did I did I just hear you right when you said Mark Hamill was was present? The was the force with him?
He sure didn't look like that, Mark Hamill.
Okay, moving on. I gather there's nothing else under good news and celebrations.
I do see Counselor McLean.
Oh, I did not see him. I apologize, Deputy Warden McLean.
That's no problem, and and thanks for highlighting all those issues that were brought up yesterday and and, yeah, Gray County and and Gray Bruce. Agriculture is a very important part of the economy here in our area, and it was sort of like the one part was the Achilles heel. The protein producers like soybean and grains that prices have driven up. But on the beef side, the cattle side, to buy that feed, it's 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 putting pressure on them because the prices of so it's sort of like a revolving circle as you go along, because the cost to grow beef is getting more expensive because the that side has got more expensive. So it's sort of that's sort of the the tug and pull that, you know, the farming part has. But certainly the part of looking at ways of increasing protein producing, you know, with regards to beef and and pork and even chicken is is sort of something that is 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 of need, and I know we've talked about that over the year. And it's some one of those things that we got to strive to see if we can get some more capacity here in Gray Bruce, especially this area is is very high in numbers of beef producing. So anyway, again, thank you, Mr. Warden, for highlighting those points.
Thank you very much as well. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. The next item is adjournment. It's been moved by Counselor Mill and seconded by Counselor Mackey. Anyone opposed? I see none, so that too is carried. We'll just take a very quick second and switch our.